Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Calvert County Public Hearing for the Planning Commission for May 19, 2021, for SD-138121. Please note that after the public hearing, the Planning Commission's regular meeting will follow. Now, I'd like to introduce Christine Finnemore, who will be our moderator for this evening's agendas, and she's going to spend a couple of minutes going over some protocol items for you this evening. Christine?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to let you know that the meeting is being recorded, both video and audio, for record-keeping purposes. Please also keep yourself muted until you're ready to speak to avoid any interruptions. For those of you calling in, you can mute and unmute yourself using buttons on your cellphone or by dialing *6. For those of you on a computer, you can mute and unmute your audio or video by moving your mouse, then using the buttons on the toolbar in the bottom-left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute yourself using keyboard shortcuts. If you're on Windows, press Alt+A. If you're on a Mac, excuse me, press Command+Shift+A. If you'd like to speak, you can use the Raise Hand function. It will notify me, the moderator, that you would like to speak, then I can call on you. Excuse me. It's very important that you use the Raise Hand function. If you don't, you will not get a chance to speak. If you're calling in, you can raise and lower your hand by dialing *9. If you're on a computer, you can raise and lower your hand by going into the Participants' menu. You can also raise and lower your hand by using keyboard shortcuts. On Windows, press Alt-Y. On a Mac, press Option-Y. For those interested in speaking, please note that comments from individuals will be limited to a maximum of two minutes. Comments from persons representing organizations will be limited to a maximum of five minutes. Finally, please say your name every time you speak, for the record and for the benefit of those calling in who can't see you. Does anyone have any questions about Zoom or Zoom etiquette before we get started? All right. Take it away.
Thank you, Christine. Commissioner Jones, the meeting is yours.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you very much. Good evening. Welcome to the May 19, 2021 Planning Commission Public Hearing for SD-138121, Rebecca's Field, Tier 3 map. Going to go into Item 1. We'll call the meeting to order, take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller?
Here.
Commissioner Kernan?
Here.
Commissioner Holler?
Here.
Commissioner Toohey?
Here.
Commissioner Williams?
Here.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Here.
Commissioners, welcome to this evening's meeting. Mr. Conover?
Welcome, commissioners. Thank you. Item 2 is recognitions of persons attending this evening's meeting. From County Planning and Zoning, staff are Mary Beth Cook, Director, and Olivia Vedotto, Planner 3. Also in attendance are John Mattingly, providing legal counsel, Becky Parkinson, serving as recording clerk, and Christine Finnemore, serving as the moderator. Moving on to Item 3, which is action on proposed agenda. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioners, do we have any changes to the agenda? I will entertain a motion. Motion to approve agenda?
I'm second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Kernan and a second by Commissioner Toohey. Vice Chair Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Toohey?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover?
Thank you, Commissioner. Item 4 is public hearing regarding SD-138121, Rebecca's Field, Tier 3 map. Presenting this evening is Olivia Vedotto, Planner 3. Olivia?
Good evening, commissioners and everybody. Let's see if I can share my screen. Thank you for coming to my rescue. So... Yes.
Sure.
I am. I believe I am.
Yeah.
I heard you.
There, now you are.
Thank you. So, can everybody see the screen? Yes, Olivia?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just want to make sure. Thanks, Paul. So, this evening, this public hearing is for Rebecca's Field, SD-138121. It is a public hearing for a major subdivision that is within the Tier 3. Public hearings are required for Tier 3 major subdivisions. This is pursuant to the 2012 laws of Maryland, Chapter 149, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012 and the requirements. So, I would like to show you, this is the map. This map was adopted in April 25, 2017, and the Tier 3 categories, any major subdivision within that area has to have a public hearing. The subject property is off of Cox Road in Huntington, closest to the intersection of Route 4. If you are familiar with this area, the larger parcel adjacent to the north, parcel 495, shown on this tax map, is Huntington High School. This is the list of the adjoining property owners that was provided by the developer and the applicant. Legal notice was presented in the paper, and all of the adjacent property owners were notified by mail of the public hearing. This is the same tax map, which shows the coordinating parcels with that list of adjoining property owners. This is the preliminary plan. As you can see, it's 14 lots. Any subdivision of lots more than seven is a major subdivision, or a public right-of-way is also a major subdivision. This has a public right-of-way and over seven lots. The preliminary plan itself, for the content of the lots, the design, the layout, access, will be coming to you if this is approved tonight. It should be on the June agenda for preliminary review and approval. So, to move on for tonight, pursuant to that 2012 law, Chapter 149, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, it requires that the criteria that was implemented for all major subdivisions within the Tier 3 must be approved with one public hearing by the Planning Commission to review specific criteria that is set forth by that law. As part of that, the review requires the following information to be provided. Number 1, the cost of providing local governmental services to the residential major subdivision, unless a local jurisdiction's adequate public facilities law already require a review of those governmental services. So, pursuant to Article 7 of the Cowherd County zoning ordinance, adequate public facilities for schools and roads must be available prior to final plat approval. Number 2, the potential environmental issues or a natural resources inventory related to the proposed residential major subdivision must be provided. Pursuant to Article 8 of the Cowherd County zoning ordinance, the environmental features, which are wetlands, steep slopes, erodible soils, forest conservation requirements, and the buffers that go along with them, that they must be shown on the preliminary plan along with any required setbacks or any buffers, along with any supporting reports and documents for review, to provide adequate protection of those sensitive areas. Item number 3, in addition to the Planning Commission review, documentation must be submitted to the local environmental health director indicating that the proposed residential major subdivision within an adopted Tier 3 area for their review and approval. So, the preliminary plan and the final plat are both submitted to the Health Department for review and approval, and they do sign off on the record plat, but they also approve prior to preliminary approval by the Planning Commission. So, we provided a copy of the approved tier map to the Environmental Health Division in May of 2017 to use in their review. This was deemed acceptable by the Maryland Department of Planning to meet this requirement. Fiscal impact? There will be no fiscal impact to Cowherd County, as the developer is responsible for the construction of the lots, the roads, and other county, state, and federal requirements, which will be reviewed and approved with the preliminary plan and the final plats. The preliminary plan and the final plats, excuse me, also require approval by the Planning Commission. You will see this preliminary plan before you, as I said earlier, more than likely next month in June. The final plats will come to you if approved, once they have been reviewed and approved for final plat certification. Adequate public facilities for the schools and the roads must be met prior to final plat approval. Fees that are associated with the residential permits, together with the excise tax, are also in place to partially offset county services for schools, recreation, roads, and solid waste. So, in conclusion, the applicant has met the requirements pursuant to the 2012 laws of Maryland, Chapter 149, which is the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of 2012, and the criteria set forth by that law. So, the Planning Commission has several options. Before I read them, I will let you know that I'm happy to answer any questions that I can. I do know that a representative of the developer is on here and possibly the engineer, but I'm not sure. So, the Planning Commission may consider the request and approve it. The Planning Commission may consider the request and approve it with modifications. The Planning Commission may defer and request additional information for approval, or the Planning Commission may consider denying that request. But before you do, if you have any questions, please let me know.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions regarding this.
Please, Mr. Freeland.
Olivia, Lot 6, there is a identified cemetery that is adjacent to Lot 6.
Yes, sir.
What are the developer's responsibilities when a cemetery is located within a subdivision?
So, it's kind of interesting. Maryland law does not have as much protection as you would think that it does, but they are required to provide, not necessarily a separate area, which they are actually doing on this plan, but we have had subdivisions even in the very recent past where they've been included on a lot. They have to be shown, they have to have an easement for access for any of the heirs or other parties that would want to access the grave site, you know, for visitation, maintenance. So, they've done what they have to do in this case, and it's probably better to have it on a separate parcel, like they're showing here on this one, than actually to be on a lot. So, there is the protection that, you know, that cannot be removed or anything like that.
The parcel is identified as Parcel B. Who will own Parcel B? Will it be deeded to the family?
When you say, as far as that actual area?
Yes.
The developer would have to speak to that. It could either go with the entire open space and be part of an HOA's responsibility. If they have an HOA, we don't require them, so that is up to the developer. As far as the homeowners association, I apologize, but that's the acronym, HOAs for homeowners association. It could be one of the adjacent lot owners, if they wanted, if there was family still there, and maybe one of them is going to be located on that lot or is close by, but that would be something the developer would have to answer for you.
Does anyone know whether the cemetery is being maintained or not?
I would have to defer that to the developer.
It is.
It is being maintained?
Yes, by Griff Harrison, who is, that's his, his family's, and Griff Harrison and his family, actually, who discovered it about, I don't know, 10 years ago or so, and...
Sir, this is the clerk. Could you please identify yourself?
I'm sorry. My name shows as Duke Jones, but my name is Eugene Jones. I said Parcel...
Mr. Jones owns the parcel right in front on Cox Road?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyway, they cleaned it out, restored it, planted it with a periwinkle, and put a fence around it, and have been maintaining it for these years, and he still actively goes back
All right, thank you. I think this is probably my last question, but when Lot 6 is finally sold, will the buyer be informed that there's a cemetery adjacent to the property with an easement to it?
So, it will be shown on the final plats, the same as it is shown here, along with notes for the easements, the access, the protection, basically the same notes and conditions that we had previously this year on another project. And I apologize, Mr. Commissioner Freeland, you may not have been on the board at that time, but yes, anybody that would be buying Lot 6 or Lot 7 or any of the lots actually in the subdivision will see this area on the record plats along with the notes. That will be recorded. It's public information. I would hope that the builder and the real estate agents and anybody involved would be notifying people as they're looking at the lots, but when they get a copy of the record plat, they will see it on there.
So, at this time, if the developer wanted to, they could deed the cemetery parcel to a family member of the folks buried there?
Absolutely, and that may be what their intent is. They just haven't told me, and it's not, ownership is not what we get into as far as the review part of it. We make sure that all of the requirements by the state and our ordinance and recommendations from the historic district are shown and put into place, and that people have the easement and ability to go to the grave site, and that's our responsibility on it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeland. Mr. Conover?
Is there anything more from the applicants that you'd like to present at this time? Anything from the agent at this time?
No, sir. Not a thing.
If that, Commissioner Jones, I would recommend that you move on to public comment from proponents first. Just as a reminder, individuals can have two minutes, and individuals, or people who are representing organizations, can have five minutes. The moderator will ask for proponents here in a second. When you do begin and you're called upon, please state your name, and whether you're responding or commenting as an individual or for an agency. So, I'll hand it over to you, Christine.
Thank you, Paul. At this time, there are two hands raised. Mr. Jones, who just spoke, and Donna's iPad. I'm assuming iPad is not Donna's last name. And proponent or opponent? I think we want to start with proponent.
Correct.
If you'd clarify that. Mr. Jones?
I believe he's muted.
My apologies. So, we want proponents first, correct?
Correct.
So, we're going to start with Mr. Eugene Jones first, correct?
Correct, and he is muted. I believe he's talking.
Okay. Mr. Jones, you're muted, sir.
Mr. Jones, when you begin, you'll have two minutes, and at 30 seconds, I'll give you a heads-up.
Okay. Really, I am, at this point, neutral, but I do have a question as to what GWC means. I notice it's all along the edge there. Are those buildable lots, or are those just some kind of right-of-way?
So, the area where you see GWC as a type, as a soil type, but that entire area, if you can see where the line goes from Cox Road, there's a skinnier strip. That's actually a widening strip that will be dedicated to Cowherd County to provide area for future widening of Cox Road as needed. And then the area between that, where you see like a swirly with an arrow on each side, that is a front roadway buffer, and that area will be planted, and that provides a buffer. That's not a lot. The lots start beyond that, where you see the lot numbers. Lot 9 is adjacent to it on the west side of the proposed road, which is Patriot Lane, and Lot 1 is on the east side of that.
And Mr. Jones, I did stop the clock for you while she was answering your question, so you may continue.
I was just wondering if those are buildable lots there or so. It looks like from my point of view that there are one, two, three lots that will abut our property.
That is correct, but the area that you were talking about in the front is an actual front roadway buffer that gets planted with landscaping. The lots continue past that.
All right. Thank you. And one other question about the map itself. Is the dotted area inside of each of those lots, the buildable area? Is that what that means?
So, the dotted area, I believe, where you see little, like little circles, that is the septic recovery area. The actual building envelope is within the building restriction lines, where you see the dash lines that say BRL. That area is your buildable area, and your septic recovery area can be in that completely or partially and within, outside of that, within the lot. So, I'm assuming your concern is how close could the lots be to your house?
Well, how close the houses would be, yeah, but I see only, it looks like one is up against the corner of the lot. Is that correct? The northeast corner?
So, the septic recovery area is on Lot 8, is coming up to the corner, to the northeast corner of your property. So, the building area on Lot 8, for example, would be everything within that building restriction line area.
So, where it says LBB, that's the building area?
No, that is your septic recovery area.
Okay, so outside of that area.
It requires to have 10,000 square feet of septic recovery area. Correct. Outside of that.
So, outside of that area is the buildable area. Okay.
Yes, sir. Sure. And Mr. Jones, I believe that your wife has my phone number here at the county. If you have any other questions that you think of after tonight, just give me a call. I'm extension 2379. That goes for anybody that's on here.
All right, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Jones, did you want to speak for the project, or did you only have questions?
Well, our interactions with the builders have been very positive. So, like I say, I don't want to really advocate it or not. I think depending on other people's concerns, you know, but I was just more curious about what's happening than anything.
Okay. As Olivia stated, we encourage you to contact planning staff with questions. This evening's purpose is a public hearing for the public to be able to speak. So, we want to make sure you have gotten your thoughts out this evening, but further questions, certainly give us a call.
Okay.
Are there any other proponents that would like to speak on this item?
At this time, Paul, there are no other attendees but their hands raised.
Commissioner Jones, if you're okay, I'll move on to opponents. Oh, there's one that just came up. Phone number ending in 4262. If you'd like to take that, Christine, and see if they're proponent or opponent. Now, they disappeared. Okay, we'll move on to opponents at this time.
Paul, just real quick, Paul, if we get to opponents and a proponent pops back up, we'll take them.
That is fine.
Okay. Go ahead.
Christine, do you see any hands raised at this time?
They had their hand raised again as you guys were speaking. The phone number ending in 4262. Are you a proponent or opponent? And please make sure you identify yourself by name.
And you'd have to unmute yourself. Christine, I'm not hearing anything. I believe we can move on. Commissioner Jones?
Sorry.
At this time, if you'd like...
Sorry about that.
Oh, there we are.
This is Bob Espis, and I consider myself neutral. I see that there is what looks like a creek or a creek bed in kind of the northern portion. Is that, am I reading this correct?
When you say the northern portion, are you speaking of the area that's labeled as residue? Or are you, are you speaking...
It's just beyond the forest retention area 1.
Yes, I got it.
Yes.
So, yeah, there, it does look like there is possibly a Blue Line stream. All of that area is protect, sorry, I can't say that word, protected with conservation open space. So, if you can see, there's like a break between the two portions of lots, and there's a lot of sensitive areas in there. There's wetlands, there are buffers, there are steep slopes, and there's forest retention area. That will all be shown, as you see it here, as conservation open space. There is also a conservation open space deed that adds more protection to that area that will be recorded. There will be specific notes on the record plat, and that area is non-buildable for residential purposes, and it's open space to protect those environmentally sensitive areas and also promote clustering of the lots and having larger areas, even when you do a subdivision, to not be all lots and roads, but eventually, over time, as parcels develop, you end up getting larger slots and areas of open space and protected areas and forests. So, that will all be in that open space area.
Okay, so it looks like the little appendix that's up to the north, that's not being built on, then?
Correct. That area right now is shown as residue. The developer may come back and do something with it later. They have not provided any information at this time of what their plans are, but as you can see, like you were talking about, that area to the north of forest retention area number 1, that wetland area and steep slopes continues on to the east, and to get to anything in the back is very problematic, almost impossible. I would never say totally impossible, because if you throw enough money at anything, you can make it happen, but in reality, it becomes cost prohibitive. I believe that...
That River Valley would be probably mucky and difficult to get across, I would think.
Yes, so, in a discussion at one point, even looking at it, there were engineers and other people in the development industry that were saying it'd be a quarter of a million-dollar crossing.
Right. But I always like to see open space, for sure. Perhaps the residents there would enjoy that a great deal. So, your stormwater management is predominantly just going to be forested buffers?
I can't speak about stormwater management. That is public work, so I'm not sure if we have anybody on here, or if the engineer or the developer would like to speak to it. State of Maryland has stormwater management requirements, and they have gone through conceptual stormwater management study into the preliminary stormwater management at this point, and all of that would be completely reviewed, and any easements and the facilities that they put in place will be done by the final plat. So, they are very, much more restrictive for stormwater management in the last five years even than previously, so there will be stormwater management.
That's my hobby, so, yeah, I've been following that. Okay, well, thank you very much, and I suppose we'll be seeing that more detailed stormwater management information in future meetings, then.
Thank you, Mr. Espis.
And actually, let me just say that when the preliminary comes before the board, it's more of the notes and conditions and requirements that will need to be on the final plat for this to be approved, and that would be any county and state requirements that are part of our review by those agencies. If you would like more information... If you would like more information, really detailed information on the stormwater management or to even see the report, we can provide that for you or I can even give you information for who you can contact in the Public Works Department that reviewed that stormwater management plan along with this preliminary plan. You can send me an email or give me a call. Again, the number here is four one oh five three five sixteen hundred. I'm at extension two three seven nine. I'll be happy to give you information and you can contact the Public Works Department. And I'm sure they can provide you with a whole lot more on the stormwater management.
Thank you for your answers and I apologize to the commission for perhaps taking more time than they should have.
No problem, sir. Thank you.
All questions are welcome.
So Commissioner Jones, the next three steps in this process are concluding comments from the applicant, then staff, and then planning commissioners before you move on to any actions.
And Paul, just to add on to that, at this time, I do not see any hands raised.
I agree. Thank you. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner? Mr. Chair, this is Greg Kernan.
Go ahead, sir.
There was a person, Donna, Donna's iPad, was she for or against? And did she wish to speak?
Thank you, Commissioner Kernan. Ms. Donna?
You're muted. Donna, are you going to talk or not?
She's muted. I don't think she could last.
Unmute yourself.
There you go.
Hi, I'm just really interested in following this meeting again.
Ma'am, if you don't mind identifying yourself.
I'm sorry, my name is Donna Jones. And my husband Duke has already spoken. We live at three twenty. The property surrounds our house. We are following this, of course, as the perhaps most interested people who will be affected quite greatly by the development to come. And as my husband said, our interactions so far have been positive, questions answered. And I find myself at this point to be interested and neutral. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Thanks for your comment. We appreciate it. Mr. Conover, what action do we need to take from here?
If there's, we're concluding comments at this time, first by the applicants or agents, then by staff, and then anything more from the planning commission. So want to talk with the applicant or agent first if they have any concluding comments?
I have nothing to add, Mr. Conover. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
The same for me, Mr. Conover. John Olver.
Thank you, John. Any concluding comments from staff, Olivia?
I had already gone over the four options for the planning commission. If you need me to go over them again, I'll be happy to. But other than that, unless you have any additional questions, I think I am probably done.
Thank you, Olivia. Then Commissioner Jones, back to you and the planning commission.
Olivia, go through the four options again, please.
Absolutely. So option one is the planning commission may consider the request and approve. Option two, apologize, would be consider the request and approve with modifications. Option three would be to defer and request additional information for approval. And option four is consider denying the request.
Okay, thank you, Olivia. I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of S D one three eight one two one Rebecca's Field, lots one through fourteen preliminary plan pursuant to the two thousand twelve Laws of Maryland, chapter one forty-nine, the Sustainable Growth and Agricultural Preservation Act of two thousand twelve and its requirements.
Second.
My apologies, my internet cut out for a second. Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
Second by Commissioner Freeland, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie. Commissioner Tuie.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Thanks. Thank you, everyone. Olivia, thank you. And Christine, thank you all for your comments. And thanks to the public for your comments. We greatly appreciate your input. Thank you. Mr. Conover?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. And you will probably see me back next month with the preliminary on this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Jones, before you move on to item five and a possible break, I just wanted to let everybody on know that the planning commission regular meeting is going to follow the public hearing. Commissioner Jones?
Motion to adjourn and we will continue this directly after this. Motion to adjourn, please.
Same here.
A motion by Commissioner Tuie. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
Motion carries. We'll just take a moment and Becky will let us know when we will reconvene. Mr. Conover? That's okay. I'll start from here.
If you'd like to unmute.
I probably, thank you very much. Sorry, Commissioner, I have it. Welcome, everybody, to planning commission regular meeting for May nineteen, two thousand twenty-one. Christine Finnemore is our moderator for this evening and she's going to spend a minute to go over some protocol items for this evening. Christine?
Thank you, Paul. Good evening, everyone. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to let you know that this meeting is being recorded, both video and audio for record keeping. Please also keep yourself muted until you're ready to speak to avoid any interruptions. For those of you calling in, you can mute and unmute yourself using the buttons on your cell phone or by dialing star six. For those of you on a computer, you can mute and unmute your audio and video by moving your mouse, then using the buttons on the toolbar bottom left of your screen. You can also mute and unmute yourself using your keyboard shortcuts. If you're on Windows, press Alt A. If you're on a Mac, plus press Command Shift A. If you'd like to speak, you can use the raise hand function. It will notify me, the moderator, that you'd like to speak, then I can call on you. It's very important that you use the raise hand function. If you don't, you will not get a chance to speak. You're calling in, you can raise and lower your hand by dialing star nine. If you're on a computer, you can raise and lower your hand by going into the participants menu. You can also raise and lower your hand by using keyboard shortcuts. On Windows, press Alt Y. On a Mac, press Option Y. Finally, please say your name every time you speak for the record and for the benefit of those calling in who can't see you. Does anyone have any questions about Zoom and Zoom etiquette before we get started? Hearing none? Take it away, Paul.
Thank you, Christine. Commissioner Jones, the meeting is yours.
For the second time, welcome. It is April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, planning commission regular meeting. I'll now take roll call. Vice Chair Bueller.
Here.
Commissioner Kernan.
Here.
Commissioner Holler.
Here.
Commissioner Tuie.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Freeland and I am Steve Jones.
Here.
Mr. Chair, thank you very much, commissioners. Mr. Conover?
Commissioner, item two is recognitions of persons attending this meeting. From county planning and zoning staff, we have Mary Beth Cook, Director, Jenny Plummer Welker, AICP and Long Range Planner, and Olivia Vedotto, Planner Three. From county department of public works, we have Carrie Dul, Director, Danielle Conroe, Deputy Director for Engineering and Highways, and George Follett, Engineering Division Chief. Also in attendance with us are John Mattingly, providing legal counsel, Becky Parkinson, serving as recording clerk, and Christine Finnemore, serving as the moderator. Commissioner Jones, moving on to item three, action on proposed agenda.
Commissioner, do I have a action on the proposed agenda?
Mr. Chair, motion to approve this evening's agenda for the regular meeting.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuie, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Here.
Motion carries. Mr. Conover?
Thank you. Item four, action on the minutes from the April twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one, planning commission regular meeting.
Commissioners, do I have any emotion or any changes that need to be made to the minutes? Do I have them?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we accept the minutes as presented.
Motion by Commissioner Tuie.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Kernan, Vice Chair Bueller.
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan.
Yes.
Commissioner Holler.
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie.
Yes.
Commissioner Williams.
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland.
Yes.
And the motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Conover.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'll be going through items five through nine. There are no items to report, but for purposes of the recording clerk, I need to go through them one at a time. Item five, town center architectural actions, there are none this evening. Item six, major subdivision for final actions, there are nothing to report this evening. Item seven, applications for site plan review, nothing to report. Item eight, major subdivisions, applications for preliminary action, there are no presentations this evening. And item nine, items for discussion and action, there are not, no items this evening for discussion or action. Moving on to item ten, items of interest. We'll start with item ten A, which is the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update. Presenting this evening is Jenny Plummer Welker, Long Range Planner and AICP. Jenny?
Good evening, commissioners, staff, and guests. Want to note that we have other members of the Long Range Planning Team with us this evening. Tamara Blake Wallace, Principal Planner, Ruth Davis Rogers, Planner Two, and Jessica Catano, Planner One. All of us are involved with the Town Center Master Plan Updates. You received in advance of the meeting the memo on the Prince Frederick Town Center Master Plan Update. Staff is currently working with staff in the other county departments and our consultant, Sabra and Associates, on preparing the draft chapters for the master plan. I've also been in contact with the sheriff's office and the Maryland State Police regarding updates for the community facilities chapter. We anticipate that the plan will be drafted and presented to you later this spring. So at your next meeting in June. After that point, once you have acknowledged receipt of the plan and are ready for staff to proceed, we will then publish the draft and then set up a public meeting for the, to explain the draft to the public and to invite comments. All comments that we received on the first draft of the master plan will be provided to the planning commission for review and for your consideration, at which point we'll meet with you in work sessions as however many you would like to go through the draft plan to prepare it as your draft for public hearing. And so that's the update on Prince Frederick. May I answer any questions?
Hearing none, I look forward to meeting with you next month on the Prince Frederick Master Plan Update.
Jenny, thank you very much. We appreciate it. Mr. Conover?
Commissioner, moving on to item ten B, the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan Update. Presenting for this item is Jenny Plummer Welker, Welker, sorry, AICP and Long Range Planner. Jenny?
Thank you, Mr. Conover. For the Dunkirk Town Center Master Plan Update, we are currently in phase one of the update. I'm going to begin to share my screen and go through a short presentation. If you have any questions at any time, please, please let me know. And we'll certainly be glad to take questions during the slideshow and then at the end.
Your screen is up, Jenny.
Thank you. So for the, excuse me, for the update, we have three phases that the planning commission approved earlier for each of the town center updates, which is the first phase, identify issues. The second phase, develop the plan, and the third phase, adoption. During the identify issues section, we'll be doing our kickoff meeting on June second. I'll get into more detail in a few moments. We will be doing survey for that and then doing a follow-up workshop later on. We do have four consultants on call for the Town Center Master Plan Updates. Currently, Sabra and Associates has the first assignment for Prince Frederick. I don't know if we will need a consultant for help in updating the Dunkirk. We'll know more once we do the community outreach for the meetings and the survey to find out what the prime issues are in Dunkirk. At that point, staff will make a recommendation to the planning commission whether we need to bring in a consultant or not. And we have those four companies on call. To develop the plan, that's where we are with Prince Frederick at the moment. That's where we, staff drafts the plan and then presents it to the public and then works with the planning commission on preparing a draft for the planning commission's public hearing. Once the planning commission holds its public hearing and receives public comment, that's an opportunity for you to make any changes to the plan before recommending it to the county commissioners for adoption. At which point, the Board of County Commissioners would hold a public hearing to receive public comment. And then after the close of that, consider comments and then decide whether to adopt the plan, modify the plan, deny the plan, or send the plan back to the planning commission. So the Board of County Commissioners have four options at that point. I'd like to mention the liaisons, Dunkirk liaisons. We sent an invitation, a letter out to over a hundred and thirty groups to invite them to identify a liaison. And these are community organizations, civic and citizen groups, homeowners associations, county boards, commissions and commissions, and county departments and agencies, inviting them to participate in the Town Center Master Plan and Zoning Update. And by identifying a liaison, that gives us a primary contact where we can, one, gather input on how to reach out to the community and two, let them know about upcoming meetings and such so that they can get the word out to their groups and then work with them as we move forward in developing the plan. I would like to note that these, the liaison group, it's not a steering committee, it's not an advisory committee. That role remains with the planning commission. Moving on from the liaisons, as I mentioned, the kickoff meeting will be held on June second. It will be a virtual meeting. There'll be a few county staff and the chairman in the courthouse. Everybody else will be coming in virtually. And people who wish to participate in the meeting by providing questions during the meeting, they need to register in advance. So the information is available on the county's Town Center Update page. And there's links here. If the registration deadline is the day of the meeting, nine AM on June second, or until capacity is filled. The meeting will also be streamed live on the county website, on the county's Facebook page, and then also broadcast live on cable channel six and ten seventy HD. We will record the meeting for anyone who is unable to attend or would like to go back and watch it at a later date. So that'll be available up on the county's website. We sent out a postcard, or sorry, we worked with the communications and media relations staff to design a postcard. And then we worked with a printing company. Those, the postcards have been delivered to the Dunkirk Post Office and they should be delivered if they have not already been done. So there's about three thousand postal patrons in the Dunkirk zip code. And the postcard provides information about the kickoff meeting. So if people are wondering how they can participate, there's many opportunities. Of course, they can provide input at the public meetings. We'll also have workshop style type of meetings also. Share their ideas via surveys and then submit written comments or speak at the public meetings or public hearings at the planning commission and Board of County Commissioners. To learn about events, we encourage people to sign up to receive news flashes. And the information is available on the county's website under the notify me section. And they should select planning and zoning. I would like to note of the, so far of the liaisons, we've had eighteen groups identify a liaison for their group. And we welcome at any time other groups... and we welcome at any time other groups to identify a liaison for their group. So that concludes my presentation. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Jenny, um, thank you. Very, very good. Thank you. So eighteen groups in Dunkirk alone? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
There are eighteen groups. Some of them are specifically in Dunkirk. Some are countywide groups, such as the Board of Education, the Calvert County Public School Staff. We have both an administrator and a vice principal at Northern High. One of the groups that has come forward and indicated a liaison includes the Concerned Black Women of Calvert County. So we do have both Dunkirk-specific groups and groups that represent countywide groups.
We've always had good participation from Dunkirk, and that, that always helps us along, so that's really good to hear. Thank you. Commissioners, any other questions or comments? Mr. Conover?
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to item ten C, Transportation and Traffic Discussion. Presenting this evening is Mary Beth Cook, Director. Also in attendance are, is Carrie Dahl, Director of Department of Public Works, and his staff. Mary Beth?
Good evening, Commissioners. Traffic, it's a topic that's reoccurring, and it comes up at almost every, every public meeting. So I'm here tonight just to provide you an overview of the tools that Planning and Zoning and Public Works staff currently use when reviewing proposed development projects. So first and foremost, the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan, adopted in two thousand nineteen. It has a transportation element. Chapter seven contains goals and objectives, and a quote from one of the goals and objectives is to maintain and improve road systems to provide for safe and efficient travel. The Planning Commission reviews all county improvement projects for consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. So that is one of your first roles as projects come through. The second is the County Transportation Plan that was adopted in May of two thousand twenty. It complements the Comprehensive Plan and addresses in further detail the transportation elements that I mentioned from the Comprehensive Plan. The Adequate Public Facilities for Roads is contained in Article Seven of the Calvert County zoning ordinance. And under Section seven dash one oh four C, there is a requirement for a traffic impact analysis, or TIA. It's submitted with development plans reviewed by the Department of Public Works staff to determine if a traffic study is warranted. And if so, it is done at the applicant's expense and reviewed by the Public Works staff. The traffic impact study will be required to determine if roadways and intersections are adequate to accommodate the proposed development. And under the Calvert County zoning ordinance, Chapter seven, to be determined adequate by the Planning Commission, the county roads must maintain a Level C service rating, with the exception of town centers where a level of service D is acceptable. The Public Works staff recommends to the Planning Commission as to whether the roads are adequate, and that comes in with all of the development review that you, comments that you receive. We're currently doing updates to the Calvert County zoning ordinance, as well as the Town Center zoning ordinances, which Jenny just mentioned. And Public Works and Planning and Zoning staff will be reviewing all of the existing regulations under the Adequate Public Facilities. As you've heard in some of Jamie Kendrick's presentations for the Master Plan Updates, he has been making suggestions during those updates, which certainly will be considered as we're writing. And then those will be presented to you in the master plan as part of your plan. The citizens and the Planning Commission will have ample opportunity to provide comments on any draft changes or proposals that we have throughout the update process. And lastly, we have state roads in the county, so the Maryland State Highway Administration staff is part of our Technical Evaluation Group that reviews development plans, makes recommendations and comments, which are also included in your staff reports that you receive for each development. So these are just some of the ways that you have direct involvement, and, and I wanted to let you know that certainly updates can be made to any of these regulations during the processes. If you have any specific questions, Tamara Blake Wallace, our Transportation Planner is on, as well as Paul mentioned, Carrie Dahl, the Director, Danielle Conroy, Deputy Director, and the brand-new Engineering Division Chief, George. And George, I don't want to mispronounce your last name. Pollitt, is that correct?
Yes. Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Jones?
Uh, ma'am, thank you very much, Director. I, I think it goes without saying that traffic is, I know it's high on my priority list, and just from other conversations, it's, to my knowledge, it's very high on the rest of this board. Thank you for your presentation. Commissioners, do we have any questions? Mr. Conover?
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to item ten D, Site Plan Applications. Are there any questions on those from Commissioners?
You have a question about numbers eight and nine, Winter Operations Facility. Can you go into some more detail about that, Christine, if you're still there?
Christine is on.
Way to put me on the spot, Commissioner Kernan. I would be happy to. The Winter's Oper- Winter Oper- oh my goodness, Winter Operations Facility is currently under review for conceptual site plan and will come before you at some point at a future meeting for your review. It is a public works project, and I don't know if, if Public Works would want to give an overview at this time, but it is a site plan at, at the concept stage that the Planning Commission will see at a future meeting.
Very well.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Carrie Dahl, I know you're on the meeting. Did you want to give a quick overview? Or not? Greg, did you have specific questions?
Sorry, what, what was the, what was the question?
As, as we will see it again, that's fine. That's all right. For now, for now. Tell me about Armory Square.
Basically the same scenario, Commissioner Kernan. That is a site plan that is currently under review by the Technical Evaluation Group. And, and I failed to mention that on the, the previous site plan you asked about, the Technical Evaluation Group is reviewing both of these, and at a future meeting, you will see this project before you for, same scenario for review. And a staff report would be prepared and presented to the Planning Commission.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Conover?
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to item ten E, Subdivision Applications. Any comments from Commissioners on items one through six? Hearing none. We'll move on to item eleven, which is the two thousand twenty one Planning Commissional Annual Meeting. Item eleven A is just a quick overview, and there is no action required of what I'll, on what I'm going to present. Item eleven A, again, the overview. Every May, the Planning Commission by bylaws is required to hold an annual meeting as part of the regularly scheduled meeting. The three distinct parts of this annual meeting are a review of operating documents, the development review annual report, and the election of new officers for two thousand twenty one and two thousand twenty two. Moving on to item eleven B, operating documents. At this time, what I'm asking is for the Planning Commissioners to take until the next meeting, unless you have any comments at this time, to review the bylaws and the policies and procedures for the Planning Commission and come back in June if you have any recommendations for updates. Staff will be presenting some ideas that we have to improve the, the documents that we have, and we'd love to hear from the Planning Commission. I don't believe that we'll be able to take any final action at the next meeting, as there are some advertising and publication requirements to have those passed. So are there any questions on that before I move on? Moving on to item eleven C, this is going to be a presentation of the two thousand twenty Development Review Annual Report. Just need one second to share my screen here. And is that up? Can you see it?
Yes, sir.
Full screen?
Look good. There you go.
Thank you, sir.
The Planning Commission's annual report is a detailed account of the work performed by the Planning Commission and developmental review staff. Part of the Planning Commission's annual report will be included in the annual report to the, submitted to the Maryland Department of Planning per the Annotated Code of Maryland. You can expect to have that presentation before you on the, at the June sixteenth meeting. Work performed by the Planning Commission and staff can be easily broken down into about four sections: planning, zoning, development review, and administrative. As you can see on this slide, Planning Commission hearings, the Planning Commission heard and or acted upon a variety of plans, programs, projects, processes between February twenty twenty and December twenty twenty. It's important to note that due to the pandemic, the Planning Commission's meeting for March eighth were canceled. So all the work performed in twenty twenty was condensed into eighty-three percent of the normal meeting time allotted for the Planning Commission. The purpose of these hearings in all was to determine their consistency with the Calvert County Comprehensive Plan. Projects under this umbrella included CIP projects, open space reports, a report on COVID navigation and recovery, nuisance flooding plans, and plan compliance with the Comprehensive Plan. Further, the Planning Commission heard and took, took action on Adequate Public Facilities, which are a growth management tool which restricts development where facilities are inadequate, and there were two meetings as, as noted above. With the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty census and the Prince Frederick Master Plan Updates well underway during the reporting year, the Planning Commission received updates on the county's census plans, activities, and accomplishments at sixty percent of the regularly scheduled meetings and on the Prince Frederick Master Plan at seventy percent of their regular meetings. In two thousand nineteen, updates to the county's transportation plan began, and after several public workshops, presentations, and public hearings, the updated transportation plan was seen by the Planning Commission four times and before the Board of Commissioners in November of two thousand twenty. Zoning is also a part of the work performed and involves any of the work related to proposed changes in the adopted zoning maps and zoning ordinances. Items presented to the Planning Commission for text and map amendments were spread throughout the entirety of twenty twenty, with nearly seventy-two percent of all cases moving on to the joint public hearing with the Board of Commissioners. Give me one second here. Since Calvert County has adopted subdivision regulations, the Maryland Annotated Code of Land Use requires that requires the establishment and maintenance of a planning commission, your body, for the review and approval of the subdivision applications. While in varied stages of their processes, the Planning Commission heard or acted upon a total of five subdivision applications. Please note that not all development applications are required to obtain Planning Commission approval, and the development review team handled over thirty additional subdivision applications at varying stages of the approval process. Replatings are also included but not noted on this slide, and they are changes to the previously recorded subdivision plats or needed properties. While those numbers, again, do not appear on these slides, staff worked on seventy-eight unique submittal applications in twenty twenty for replats, recorded a total of eighty replats, which varied from application submittal dates from two thousand and eighteen into two thousand and twenty, and overall handled over one hundred and ten replats in the recording year of twenty twenty. And then one second here, apologize. For this slide, not including the number of regularly scheduled meetings, the Planning Commission handled at least one administrative action at eighty percent of their annual meetings. Moving on to slide number seven, so overall, the items before the Planning Commission can be broken down into smaller categories, that being administrative, text and map amendments, site plan subdivisions, and developmental review items and master plans. As you can see, thirty-seven percent of the actions the Planning Commission took were, can be under the administrative category, twenty-one percent under text amendments, sixteen percent under site plan subdivisions and other items, and the remainder under master plans, APF reports, census, and transportation plans. Overall, development review tackled over two hundred and twenty-five development review applications in addition to the Planning Commission items. This is an eight percent drop from the two hundred and eighty-five recorded in two thousand and nineteen and a twenty-one percent drop compared to the recording applications in two thousand and eighteen. Though we don't have any hard evidence, we believe that the drop is directly related to the pandemic. We definitely do expect an increase in two thousand twenty-one numbers, as I believe we've pretty come close to exceeding a lot of the numbers that have already, already been reported to you. Lastly, another item to note is an action that is required by the Planning Commission Administrator, who is part of the developmental review team. There are architectural review committees in varying locations around the county, and the Planning Commission Administrator reviews and approves on behalf of the Planning Commission architectural review applications after the staff liaison has reviewed them and attends the meetings. In two thousand and twenty, the PCA reviewed and acted on sixty-three individual architectural review applications. Eighty percent of the overall applications received were from Prince Frederick and Salomons. This ends my report. If there are any questions from any of the Planning Commissioners, and again, there are no actions required on this item. Any Plan Commissioners? Commissioner Jones?
A very good report, Paul. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Conover, just a quick question. It looked like there was a drop from twenty eighteen to nineteen and nineteen to twenty, so if you go back through that chart, where we were talking about the drop was attributed to the pandemic, so am I making sense? So it looked like there was a consistent drop through that period even before the pandemic, yeah?
Yep, there was a drop. Two thousand and eighteen numbers were three hundred and eleven, and it dropped to two hundred and eighty-five in two thousand and nineteen.
Okay.
But I believe that we're definitely making up for that now.
Got you. Understood. There's going to be a lot of catch-up, I'm sure, in every, hopefully every field, not just buildings, certainly, right?
Similarly to what the Planning Commission experienced in May of two thousand twenty because of the two previous months being canceled, the same effect is occurring now with development review staff and all staff in planning and zoning.
Yes, sir.
Right. If there are no further questions, I'll move on to item eleven D, which are elections. At this time, so Planning Commissioners are aware, I'll run the election process for the chair, and then after that election, that individual will take over and run the election process for the vice chair. So at this time, I will open the floor for nominations for chair.
Mr. Conover, I'd like to nominate Steve Jones for another term as Chair of the Planning Commission for two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two.
I'd like to second that.
Second, thank you. Mr. Jones, would you accept that nomination at this time before a vote?
Yes, sir, Mr. Conover.
Commissioners, are there any other nominations for Chair of Planning Commission?
Mr. Conover?
Yes, ma'am.
This is the clerk. Who second that, please?
Richard Holler.
Thank you, sirs.
Are there any other nominations for Chair of the Planning Commission? Hearing none, I'll move on to a roll call vote. Commissioner Jones?
I will abstain.
Thank you. Commissioner Bueller?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuie?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
With one abstention, it is, there are seven yays, no nays, with one exception, congratulations, Commissioner Jones, who has been reelected for one more term.
Thank you. To the board, thank you all very, very much. I find this a huge honor. There's a lot of integrity and honor on this board, and I mean that sincerely from the bottom of my heart. So this has been a weird year. Hopefully, it gets better for us, and we can get back to business as usual. Hopefully, in the next few months, we'll see how it goes, but thank you very much. With that said, we'll now move on to Vice Chair. I'll entertain a motion for Vice Chair.
Mister Chair, I would like to nominate Maria Bueller for Vice Chair, if she will accept.
Richard Holler seconds.
So a motion by Commissioner Kernan, a second by Dr. Holler, Vice Chair Bueller. Vice Chair Beulah, do you accept the nomination?
I do, thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair Beulah?
Abstain.
Commissioner Kern?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
Congratulations, Vice Chair Beulah.
Thank you, and thank you very much to the board. To reiterate what Steve said, it is an honor, and it's been a pleasure to serve, so thank you.
And I'd also like to say I abstain because I find it, I feel like a narcissist if I vote for myself, so I just couldn't do that, so, thank you all again.
Congratulations, Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Conover?
Commissioner Jones, item 12 this evening is adjournment.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, Mr. President.
Motion by Commissioner Kernan, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tuohy. Commissioner, Vice Chair Beulah?
Yes.
Commissioner Kernan?
Yes.
Commissioner Holler?
Yes.
Commissioner Tuohy?
Yes.
Commissioner Williams?
Yes.
And Commissioner Freeland?
Yes.
We are going to adjourn. I do have one thing that I want to, I know it's not on the agenda, I apologize if I get in trouble, I'll have to take it on the chin. We had a gentleman at the St. Leonard Firehouse by the name of Riley McPhiff that passed away. I served with him. He was a, a fine person. He died way too young. There'll be a fundraiser event at the golf course on Friday. We're going to raise some money for him, for the family, and just God bless him and his family. Please keep him in your prayers. Everybody have a good week, and thank you again for the nomination and the vote of confidence. I appreciate it. Thank you.